All right, we'll open a special city council meeting Wednesday, July 26th at 4:00 PM. First up on the agenda, joint sewer project connection, Alan Johnson, next one.
So I guess I passed out kind of a bunch of summary and a few other things. Maybe we can run through that first. So we had a startup for a lift station last week. There's still some punch list items in there that started off. There's cleanup, obviously, fencing, paving, just general restoration, or your own plant site, and a few other spots. We have a punch list where the lift stations started, and then we'll get one for the rest of the items as well. Just walking through this, what I did is I checked with the KAVI request. I have a joint with Utility Systems. And this is kind of, again, this is a unit price contract. So it's based on physically how many tons of the tunnels go down, how much actual classified is used on site, how much pipe is used on the site, things like that. When we do that, finalizing like the lift station, a few items, there's still maybe approximately 177,000 that would have to be paid off to Utility Systems. That's including releasing all the drainage and whatnot. In there, I also included very last little 35,000 dollars for that duct bill, check bill that you guys approved on there as well. And then the very bottom, as of June 16th, there was 55,000. Still in the PFA account, I don't know where any of the dispersals since then. There was 180,734 from an ITRB grant that has not been used that I'm aware of. So between the two, 177 in the due and the two surplus or balances still in two grand amounts, the surplus of roughly 60,000. Again, this is a unit price contract. There's a couple of items that I didn't include, like we talked about bricks and concrete backroom. Me and office building that's up there, that's where the gas service is going. And there might be, you know, a couple of tons over or under on the tunnels, things like that. Or two more or less of that to patch things up. So I would say this is give or take a couple of thousand dollars at this point. It's not a perfect picture. Anybody haven't seen this, that one? I got your pass out, so for any questions here on this page? Or any questions on the project at all?
I have a question. So you're saying there's 55,000 in the PFA and 180 in the ITRB, basically?
Yes.
And then you're subtracting all of the 177 that we owe?
Yeah.
So we only have 69,000 left then? Correct. Using that ITRB grant?
That's using that ITRB grant, correct.
Was there another grant? I thought you said there was 250 or something?
There's still, I think, Atasca County gave some money potentially to use towards this project. I don't know what the, I haven't seen any of that paperwork or what the restrictions and stuff are to have to use towards this project, can be used towards decommissioning, you know?
What's the cost of decommissioning?
So I don't have that number. That's something I'd have to get Paul to give a code or, I know he gave you guys the in our lead type contract. He's one of the things we talked about, I don't know. This is what he decided to do was asking for a budget to start, say 20,000 dollars. And when they reach that 20,000 dollars, are they still a lot to do? They come back and request some additional ones? Or they come back and say, okay, we're nearly complete, there's still 3,000 dollars remaining in our budget that we won't need. Some of that stuff you're saying is variable, how long it will take. I don't know if he's giving hard budgetary costs to anyone at the city here yet. Or if any, like he hasn't tried to see if he could put a number to it? If that's something we want to continue and pursue later this year, that's certainly an option. Then we could also look and see if that could be used towards these ITRB grant ones, and also if we could use Atasca County money that potentially leaves there, I don't know what the restrictions are though.
That was for USEC sewer plan, so.
We haven't got those funds yet?
Yeah, yeah, we got them. We got those funds from the county.
Are you talking about that 90,000 dollars?
95.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's here.
And another half of the, yeah, yeah, we got that.
And the 250, we can get whenever?
What 250?
I thought there was ITRB.
No, that's the 180.
I thought, oh, there wasn't more than that, I thought there was more.
There was also a 250,000 dollar grant given early on that was transferred to my cash flow to buy down the debt, the loan we were getting on for the wastewater facility project.
That's great, I forgot about that.
It's kind of like they got forward right away early on and.
I don't think we ever got a ticket, although. I'd like to see that, because that was supposed to be discussed later, remember?
Correct.
I don't think it ever happened, so that should be coming up.
I don't know where that got applied, but that was transferred to Nash Rock, correct.
Okay, so in this 170, are you done, Pat?
Yes.
In this 177,000 dollars earlier from USA, this, does this include all the piping and everything down inside the, where the pumps are right now?
Correct.
Okay, so let's say, because I've been down there every day now, you know that. To me, those pumps aren't big enough, so if they aren't, and we gotta go to bigger pumps? Okay, who's gonna sustain all that cost? Because they're gonna have to change the pipe side down where the pumps go too.
Not necessarily, no. A lot of times they pump through a smaller pipe into a transmission, so a bigger transmission pipe, it's a 10-inch force in between Nash Rock and Nash Rock essentially. For that long distance theoretically it goes, it does go through a larger pipe, but typically in a pump station, the piping is smaller. That's what they call like minor loss. So it pumps through this short section of small piping into a bigger pipe. If you did it in that smaller pipe, you'd get a lot more loss over that big distance. But so if you run through a small distance, a smaller diameter pipe can have less effect than if it's.
That's part of the design.
Correct, correct, exactly.
When are we gonna find out?
So, and that was, today, and obviously I didn't, nobody was on site to check anything else, but I've had a conversation with Russell from Utility Systems, I've talked to Jim about it just briefly. I know that the discussion with Nash Rock's operator about attempting, there's material on the last structure. Getting that cleaned out, seeing if that plays any effect on the little flow rate that was pumping. We haven't got the, what I call, the flow rate we're shooting for on one pump. It's been, it's been lower than it should be. So that says there's either some blockage in the pipe, a valve closed, maybe it's a blockage in the kind of structure, or something else going on. So that's, I know Utility Systems, I've spent a fair amount of time cleaning structures, pumping structures, checking valves, continuing to do that if we can't resolve it there. We might have to try to pump out of one of these clean places, see if we can hit that targeted volume or gallons per minute. We're not going all the way to the ponds, but the shore of the ponds, that would tell us that end structure is causing a significant, it's having a significant impact on the flow rates. It's not clearing or whatnot. And we have to do some further investigation into it. Call it over, and repair that or fix it. Or there's something else going on, we're not aware of it, but. Yes, it's something being looked into. I know we've talked into Russell, he's the foreman that's been on site for most of the job. When they're back tomorrow, he was going to do some cleanup around the plant and also continue to try flushing this pipe again when he was here. His way to stay in the industry this morning, we talked about what his plans are today and tomorrow later this week. So it's kind of very complex. Unfortunately, it's kind of a wait and see still at this point.
Well, that's what's killing us though, because we're supposed to be hooked up, livestock over. We're supposed to be hooked up in June, now we're July.
Yes.
Now we're August, and we're still stuck here. It's 10,000 dollars a month it's costing us.
Correct.
I mean, we, we need to move on this, and we need to move fast. Not like every other day, somebody comes and works on it. This is an emergency, let's put it that way.
Sure.
That's all, I know it's not all your, it's not your fault, but the whole conglomerate of all the companies that are in there, it's just like, well, they come and do what they want, and then when they have something else to do, they just leave us laying there, you know? StanTech was there the other day, and I understand they're probably mad because they came there and spent the whole day for nothing, because the valve was closed.
Correct.
They fixed that valve, so turned it on, so we could start pumping. Well, now we haven't seen them since.
Yeah, it would cost lots of money to come here too.
Yeah, well, they designed a system, but it's not working.
Yeah.
So I would think they should be here troubleshooting it, trying to get it going.
Yeah, I can certainly try to have some more conversations. Get them back up here. Likely they'll be here for generator startup, that's, that's the next kind of big thing, to get this thing put online permanently, you gotta have a firm backup on a lift station of this size. Obviously, you can suffer some downtime, but it's not mean to be out for one or two days in a row. It's, it's gotta be, I mean, it needs to be able to run on one pump. So staying that way too, because if you, over time, yes, not something you expect to happen in year one or year two, but in 10 years, there's a possibility that something went into one of the pumps and has to be pulled and repaired, and it might take a week or two. That's why we gotta be able to run on one pump for an extended amount of time. It's obviously not a plan, but that's, that's gotta happen.
The plumber that was here the other day says, as soon as the gas line people come, they'll come right away, hook it up, why didn't you come today? There's nobody down there.
Sure.
This is what keeps happening, they're over and over and over again. I guess that might be the way things get done nowadays, I don't know.
So I have a couple of questions then. Okay, on these pumps, what is, what was the anticipated gallons per minute? That StanTech predicted from all their flow counts? Did they have the proper flow counts when they estimated everything?
Yeah, so the targeted flow was, I think, 550, 600 gallons a minute. I don't have that number with me today, but we have, or still shorter than a bit.
So what's a bit?
Russell was telling me yesterday to hit 385 in the afternoon.
385?
But it was higher than that at some point as well.
That's both pumps or one?
One pump.
And each pump is supposed to do 550 to 600?
Correct, but it's not double that, both are hundred, that's not how pumps work. They do peak at a higher number than that, but it's, one pump should be able to sustain that for a day. That's, that's kind of what we're looking for. Where to finish the startup, when the startup people came, one of the things they need to, I guess, hit the origin, all that kind of register on the pumps is, once we hit that full number, what are the volts, amps, kind of running on in pumps? Is everything still checking on? And that's one of the things that we're kind of waiting on as well. You don't have the target flow data yet to give you the amps, but when we get it, we'll have the electrician, all amps, you know? It's not a big deal to get the amps once it's running how it's supposed to.
Okay, worst case scenario, it never gets to what it's supposed to be, then what?
We'd be asking the same question over the home, because like, we probably have to change the pumps off.
Okay, and if we have to do that, what, how much is that gonna cost them? Who's gonna pay for that? And what's the lead time on getting a pump?
Sure, so I don't have the answer to all the questions right here today. Question the cost, but yeah, similar circumstances, it's called, yes, it's like you paid for a system, it should work. Now you're getting a better system, but it's a bigger pump. So it's a, it's a case of investment, so you may pay that difference from what this pump costs to the next pump it costs.
Even though the engineer probably didn't calculate that right, it would still be our problem.
Correct, it's, it's like, okay, I ordered a 10 by 10 building, but I needed that 12 by 12 building. So you paid for the 10 by 10 building, but now you're getting a 12 by 12 building, you're gonna have to pay that difference.
Yeah, I understand that, but when, when an engineer designs it with their flows, that all the information they got, and it doesn't work, that to me is not someone else's problem.
Correct, so you, the key one, I'm paying you thoughtful, but I have difference. Whatever components need to get switched and upgraded, if that was the case, in that scenario. What behind the scenes you wouldn't see is that engineer having to pick up the difference on the contractor, you have additional time for reinstall, removal, that kind of cost. Keyon doesn't pay that, you don't pay to install it twice. So that stuff, the engineering firm probably gonna be here and or whether the, the Paul will determine that it's not a Keyon cost, correct?
True.
And that's about 50,000, wouldn't it be upgrade? Because the regular pump, when we had talked a year ago, and it, yeah.
I don't know if they are.
Because. Because we had said what it would cost when this one goes down, and you said the longevity for the lift station is 10 years, and it's 100 or 110,000, so half of that to go up, just a guesstimate.
It is.
I'm thinking it's gonna be upwards of that, yeah.
Yeah, it could be, very easily.
Interesting.
Pumps of this size are, they don't just sit there on the shelf. Other part of the question.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, that's.
Just playing through a scenario like that, say it's pumping slow and it never gets better than the 385, if that's what Russell had over there yesterday. Yes, I'd probably be looking at potentially replacing them or tweaking something to get more flow out of them. Whatever that took, if it's in bettering the system, there'd be some cost with Keyon. If it's not, we're able to do something with what's there, then it's probably minimal cost in bettering the system is the way, way I would describe it. But the lead time, so my thing is you run them slow, they need to get these flowing. Wait till a new thing came in, install it, and when they're running. So then there'd be still time that you can switch over. The issue we have is if we got a huge rain vent or something in there that kind of, we'd have to have a backup for the time being, which we can kind of, our put up to a backup right now, where we could possibly store it in the tank or something for a day or two.
And then what about bypassing?
Bypass is another option, but it's a significant violation of the city. It's always an option.
Yeah.
Rather than, it's kind of flooding homes, I agree, but yes, the city is being a violation letter, something like that.
What is the wait time on a new pump?
He's, the wait time is, so what if we have this, say it's working? All right, so say this never gets past the 385. Now, once you hook up, it's not gonna pump even that much, because you're gonna, it's not just water, it's stuff. So how is that gonna drop that?
It's still the same weight though. The weight wires, the weight roughly, it's gonna be, your crap, all the, you have to use stuff and slurry or whatever.
Yeah.
Still roughly the same weight, that's what it's pushing, all that weight of the fluid and solids and everything combined with crap.
They're gonna go down on them, it's slurry going on.
So I have another question, you said there couldn't be issues on the other end, like on the Nash Rock side? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so the last structure, my understanding is what's cool, like several feet of material that you have to go to start up.
Like what material?
Sand and brick, stuff like that, so I'll say when Utility Systems' time is like that, it wasn't there. They did a startup on their side, did that cause that, I don't know why not, but there's certainly old material. Obviously, after you ask Nash Rock to get it, and nobody said, oh, it's not our problem. And, you know, come back, Utility Systems, they certainly didn't do it either, so you don't tell them, he did it, he did it, nobody's gonna fix it. So we might have to just, like, just get it cleaned out a day or a year.
When USA finished their pipe going there, the stuff was in there then.
Okay.
So it was in there.
Sure.
They didn't put it in there.
Yeah, so it's, it's not something made through, it is, but I haven't told. But it does need to get cleaned out, that might have some effect on the pool.
And when, when's that gonna happen?
Well, I can ask Utility Systems to do it, if I don't believe they can do it, I mean.
Is that extra for us then?
It'd be extra if you get, you get, well, we're not a box, it would be.
Before you go spending all this money to pump it out, somebody needs to go in there with a long pole or something, it's less than a deal, stick it down there, keep it spalled.
Sure.
You know, I think it should have been done before. And if there's four or five feet of, like, down there, yeah, it gotta come out.
Sure.
So what, did Nash Rock do the testing originally?
Oh, yeah, sir?
Yeah.
Yes, they did similar process where they tested some pipe.
So would that suck sand in, in there?
It's possible, but it's only, it's very poor.
I think they had like a wash, they washed it and it didn't have slurry or something, I don't know.
That's.
What I'm thinking of.
Oh.
So what's the easy way the timeline, that must have troubled us?
Sure, like, I don't know why, if something like that could get done within a week, it's just a matter of getting somebody there. You can get JD and JAMCO, well, then they'll get one of their sub to there. It shouldn't, they believe, leave it off, but they're not gonna beat it tomorrow, leave it, it's the other side of it. It shouldn't be that long, it's, it's labor. Or getting a sucker truck in there or something.
I'm saying, what I was getting from the guys was they, it's pretty wet right now, I'm trying to get a sucker truck.
Yeah.
Because we got all that rain last week, so. Nothing goes our way.
Certainly, so it's a scoop on the budget, more things to add. Hopefully, answered most of your questions.
Mayor, question? So Alan, going through here for the next week, you're going to check on the sand in the place?
Yes.
Okay, and then you're gonna find out from Utility Systems when everybody's coming back to work?
Correct.
Okay, anything else that you're gonna tell me about this week?
Hopefully, we'll get a confirmed date for the startup generator.
Okay.
Sounds like that's gonna be August 11th. And that's simply because that's what the comments made?
So the gas will usually be hooked up before November 1.
I thought they already were working on that.
Me, I swung by there as it came into town, and I was like, you know, so I can be around the pipe, I definitely want that. It's got a long hole back to the line. And then, yes, it still needs to be run into the generator, so there's some work there.
You've got time now, if it can, if Generator, if it can be there, then I'm starting.
So you have a current punch list?
Sure.
You have a current punch list? Let me see.
I have, it's a preliminary one, I'll work today. I can have a running one, mostly it's a lift station item to come on, but it's gonna, you know, be shared here shortly, and then we can add more stuff to it if we can wrap it up.
So was there a meeting with Nash Rock this month?
No, they canceled. Couldn't get some people with their.
So Alan, you'll share the punch list with the council then?
Yes, I will.
Okay, very good.
If you guys are aware, anything, do you see anything? Certainly, just an email, call, like, take an app, tie them on to the final punch list, that'll be that. What'll, what'll hold up, I guess, if these things aren't getting done, that'll be the final payment stuff that does not get paid, we're probably still gonna have a partial payment and stuff before, until that final payment's released. Now, be about that time when the punch list stuff's all taken care of.
So that brings us down to number four?
Sure.
What is your, your seven?
No, number four, about the decommission plan.
Yeah, are we going, he didn't send anything for that Paul Christian thing?
So you want me to ask Paul for an estimated cost and share that with Paul? Okay.
Sure.
We're on the top of that, quick, so. This is the letter I put together, this regarding to Wesley.
It's on the back of your packet.
Last name for sure. Wesley at the MBCA, please do, he reached out earlier this month. As your new permit was issued in early January, six months from the date of issuance, he wanted a decommission plan scheduled. My quick discussion with him was, okay, we're almost to that six-month timeframe, do you need another six-month timeframe? He goes, no, we talked about it, but as soon as you can. So we're over actually today, over that six-month timeframe, I believe it's early July. I told him this was something I didn't talk to Paul Christian who said about, and something the city council had to review before we submitted. So I'm myself and Paul Christiansen, I call this a limited decommissioning, because it wouldn't be physically removing buildings, it's not committing the city any of them, it's the things, this would be normal type cleanup stuff when you quit using the facility. So it'd be pumping all the liquid basically into the new lift station, sending it to the ponds. We talked to Jason, all that, there's not an issue. We just let them know days that it's being pumped, you might see some higher strength. It shouldn't be a big deal in these pond systems, because we have still loaded out the ponds, not as big a deal as like mechanical, coming in, you might get a slurry of higher strength waves, they call it, coming through the system, but here, we still have a wound, and we get some of the pond, we mix, it shouldn't be too big of an issue. Then he'll clean all the tanks, trash for that, for the lift station, and any of the remaining solids that I would be putting to the drying beds. And then again, that's what, he wouldn't deal with the drying beds so much this year, it'd be like the next summer.
Yeah.
So I thought we had time, we'd like to get as much of that stuff onto the drying beds this year as we can, so we can dry, and it's way later to haul and like, the land application, it just makes more sense. And the next item on members, we just. Uh, the next item on members, we just look at like clarifiers and then I'm not paying for a leakage. And that's for potential use for a D Q store, like a D Q type base into the live station, and then. Um, fourth item is having a pre-demolition inspection done on all the entire facility. Uh, before I send this to him, I believe, uh, Juan Maurey has this stuff complete, that's why I put it on here, this is how like. You're throwing something off there, throwing more bone to the M T C A that we're going above the, uh. But that would grant you guys, then, is that any point in the future? Um, you can pull on these buildings, about how to get that pre-demolition type survey done, so if you decide the digester and. Another structure need to come down, we don't have to go get this inspection completed, we might have to have some data completed. But, um, I believe when the facility plan was commissioned several years ago, this item was already completed, so I thought maybe you could just share it, then. And I'll add a date on there, end of this year is what my thoughts were, when I have this letter put together. Um, and then the solids, land application by the end of next summer, it's kind of what we gotta put on here, um. I don't have any questions or comments, you guys wanna think about it for a couple weeks, and. But I can certainly, uh, share this with him. And that would, uh. Hit that permit requirement with the M T C A as far as the six pump line, we also have to inform them as soon as we switch, and then you. Actually start pumping to, uh, Nash Farm officially.
How are we gonna pump for today, Joe?
So you can use like a trash pump or.
And then pump it over to the station.
Pump it over like hard rows or fire rows or type class, type discharge holes. Right into the lift station or where that structure is ultimately a station. We do that, and obviously, um, they call on his people, are pretty sharp, if they do, as their expertise is operating. Wastewater facilities, if everyone, if it's a downpouring week, probably do a little of that pumping through while. It's slightly higher than expected flows, you know, but I mean, decent weather, we could probably do more of it.
How much is in those tanks then, what do you think?
The common call made to me was, uh, People Services already pulled that time off one pretty low. There's not a ton left in there, there might be solids in there.
Mm-hmm.
I believe the clarifiers, well, they're still in operation, so it's gonna be, when they kind of quit using it, they'll whatever on out. There's probably still gonna be some like within each one left. It's not gonna be, we won't drive by any means.
What do you do with the solids in the bottom, do you have to soak them or bring them up or suck it up?
Yeah, the pump, the pump as much as they can, and then what they'll probably do is, uh. Pull them a lot of it out and put it into the drying beds, because, uh, you call it liquid solids. It's many truckloads versus drying it, it's just a cubic, very few of those, it would, it's dried out, it's mostly moisture week, liquid week, it's what you're looking at, so. Cost line is way worth. Driving whatever we can.
There's probably a lot on the guy here.
That's what you kind of have to, they don't, he doesn't know all the time that. That one or someone who cleared, completely cleaned out, so.
Say a lot.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, any comments, like I said, if you think of something like a way to leak, and I don't hear nothing. Probably the city, any questions on the center?
I'd like to run this by him, brother, for killing.
Absolutely. All right.
And I think maybe connect with, uh, Paul Christiansen too.
Yeah.
Make sure, on the cost, and then read with the letter.
Okay.
And make sure that we're in compliance with all that.
Yep.
And I know I talked to him yesterday or the day before, but they're very minimal on what they're doing right now, so I just hope that.
Yes, I've called, I've talked to you and talked a few times.
Things aren't gonna start going wrong before we're connected, and if it, something really goes wrong with the connection, and we're gonna be meeting them longer.
I know.
It's not gonna be good.
Yes, I kind of heard the backstory, it's, you know, several employees left and.
Yeah.
Whatnot, and going super short staff, especially up here in North Carolina, so, but a lot. Like over the fort, for example, you need to make someone up from the same column for help here.
But I mean, as far as like maintenance, greasing, and it's.
Yep, it's probably not happening.
Nope.
I think once we check, once we transfer over and check on, I don't think they're gonna start back up.
No problem.
No, no.
I think it's over at that point, so, I feel like we have to make sure we get.
Yep.
This thing one, like exposed to before you switch over, or anything, or you'd be in trouble, so.
Yep.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Christiansen did ask that we touch base with him after our meeting today, would you be able to do that when you leave here?
If I don't have his cell phone number, start my phone, I'll call him in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, like I said, if I do it, I'll call him when I get back.
Okay.
But, um, for all the time, I'll, I'll be back, but if I don't, well.
I have his number if you want it.
Sure. So I don't have any other questions on this, or?
I think we covered most of it.
Okay, your questions for Jim, once here, I don't get it, pick up, get a, you said five or five thirty or something, someone to sell.
Uh, well, just get your company, finish this thing up and pass it. They would get killed by it, that's all we're doing.
That's all coming, it's, we're receiving one home pressure.
Okay. Three two zero, four two zero, fifty three sixty seven.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks. Okay.
Uh, anything else, question lines? Personally, it's like I always say, these are bigger, especially with bigger projects, any fifty million dollar project or more, ninety percent of it happens pretty quick. And it's that five, ten percent that's sometimes been very odd to me, right? And where you guys at, um? I know they have other job commitments as well to move, and just like anyone, myself included, um, but yeah. Need me to holler at someone, or, I try my best, you know, but it doesn't mean it's gonna change anything. But certainly, keep them in the loop, make them aware what's going on, um, yeah.
The bar screen, that's good and nothing, no issues there, so that's.
The bar screen's a functional thing, um, if you notice that, uh, we can talk about that in the job description for Jason, if he's gonna operate this. It'd be Monday through Friday, we can see here, we're not asking him, I don't need to come on Saturday, Sunday, unless there's super high flows or something, but. It would be a daily removal of that trash that came out of the screen, checking out the screen, that it would be on the site, but. And that's solid, like, is there gonna be anything, or they're over?
I hope so.
He's got remote read on alarms and stuff too, so they're gonna get called all that as part of the startup stuff, um.
And that's working?
So there was something still on, um, the Nash Rock end, they had, uh, not a hundred percent set up on their talent entry, is what I call it. So there was a little bit that had to happen on their end, or this side would get totally checked out, but it was very close, like, right there.
Electronic part and all that, I did, so.
Yeah, I think logically, it's, it's just all that, I mean, yeah.
Um, Alan, that does remind me that People Services owns the beacon that they're using down there for internet.
Okay.
And he would be taking that with him.
Okay.
Do we need to, does the city, do we need internet down there, or?
Uh, I can check, I, I wonder, yeah, let me, let me, uh, check into the internet, if we need a new. So it's like the router, I'm assuming, you're saying?
Yeah, kind of, yeah.
Or if they don't have something built into their system, I'm not really.
Yeah, for internet, I just came out, or getting a new router, or what?
We don't, okay. There is no internet there, so he used this other device called a beacon. He borrowed it from another city for us, but if you could speak with him about that, what we need for the current system, that would be.
Yep, I'll, I know.
Jim, do you have any questions for us, or?
No, I think so. Um, basically, it's just, um. Things that's kind of, kind of quick on us here, spread, we, we are under pressure that, that there, we'd rather receive sewage and help, the end of this year. So we couldn't bring that final connection, the lift station was online. And we didn't have a manual, that was happening in, in April, well, we, everything is so, slow these days, after the COVID, that used to get. A manual made for the first month, so I had to approve, so it's, everything's just takes so much time these days. We need like a lead timeline with the pumps, I don't know, yeah, who would deal with that? And that kind of stuff is. Takes many weeks, unless they have something that can stop for this situation.
Um, I do have another question, so what if we, would it be? An option to add another pump somewhere? Would that help?
Or you would replace one of the ones, or what, what do we do? You would, like, you're, you're saying add another pump station?
Yeah, somewhere along the line, if that would help.
Um, I think that's always an option, that'd be something that could be done, um. It's, we have to kind of look at what makes the most sense, and where we go, or something like that, about the. Case of, um, is it really needed there, you know? Certainly an option, but if that's the role that happens, I'm happy to.
It'd probably be more cost effective just to get better pumps.
Better pumps, yeah, I don't know what the lift station.
You don't have to add no one quite there, no, not, maybe changing some cable units, uh. Not quite, I think there's more that goes on the, uh, scenes, but.
Okay. That's all I got, I guess, for now.
I guess we're good, babe.
Talk to you this week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, Alan.
Yeah.
Yeah. Keep pushing.
Yeah, I don't think you're on there for.
I didn't put you on there, because we talked, you know. You're good, thank you.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Good meeting.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to, are we done?
No.
Um, number six, for the testing table for Paul Christiansen, did you, what did you talk, somewhere about that?
Yeah, we discussed it, I'm disgusted, if we're interested in selling, we might as well, we're not gonna need it. We lost to purchase some of our equipment from the old plant. A testing table, we have two of them, one is inside, and there's one outside by the chlorine tank. I don't know what kind of shape the one is outside, the one inside is a good shape, so you need to make a, probably make an offer on it at some point.
Okay, so I think.
And I know where else is done, or there might be some more things too, once, you know. We just wanted to run it by the council, and see if you guys would be interested in selling some of that stuff.
So Brian, there's a procedure to that, right, if we're gonna sell any, uh?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we're gonna sell equipment, the city's got into a formal resolution declaring the equipment surplus. So basically, the ordinance, or the resolution would have to say that the city finds that it no longer has value, or is no longer useful to the city, and we're authorized to sell it.
And then we can put it on whatever, whatever site or paper, or come up with whatever it is with the pricing, and, or take bits.
So I can do that for the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay. And then number seven, um, I did re, um, request a job description from April, clerk of Nash Rock, on Jay, Jason. The licensed operator for the joint sewer plant, and I haven't received it yet, but does the council have any things particularly want me to ask of her? On what his duties will be, and I don't have anything.
But he was over here last week, when I was down at the sewer plant, and, you know, getting trained in on our controls and all that. I think it's gonna be something that we're gonna kind of have to wait and see what there is to do.
Okay.
You know, his job would either gonna be to take care of his plant.
Mm-hmm.
And to handle both sites.
And he'll have to do that bar screen every day.
He's, he already paid dollars, fully, he's gonna do that, you know, he's got to be something different, in high flows, you know, we might have, have to help with that, if you gotta change your bag eight times a day. You know, might, otherwise it'll end up being overtime for us, so. She told him that she's running like a bag a day now, that's, you know, well, she, he said every day, maybe it's not full, but that's what she said.
And that's kind of what was before, but, I don't know.
There's gonna be a lot of problems, bugs to work on at first, so he's gonna be flogging right out the back, but then it'll be later on, duties will be less and less and less as the system picks up.
I mean, he probably won't have to do a lot on the Nash Rock side, I can't think that he would, I mean.
I'm not that familiar with their side, I mean, there's a lot more over there than there is here.
Right, because that's the main, yeah, I know.
Just have to.
I mean, I think it's gonna probably be the hell tale when the rains come, and.
Some of this will be discussed at, uh, soon, you, and we have, you know, stand top, and I'll keep asking, you're an engineer, you know, what's his job, what's going on here, how many hours a day is he staging? You can call in and ask him, and he's pretty fun, you know.
Um, do you think it would be?
Tell us what's going on.
A good idea to let them know that, I mean, when's your next meeting?
Should be in August, Tuesday.
Is it this, Saturday or Thursday?
It'll be sixteenth of August, no, twenty seventh, fifteen.
Third weekend, or third Tuesday?
There are a couple times, and we're just gonna get the generator done on the eleventh, so. By that time, we should know if we can hook up or not.
Mm-hmm.
Both they gotta order, and if they gotta order pumps, well, we can sit here for, we don't know.
That's what I'm thinking, because we can't let this, our plant.
Might, might, hopefully, unless there's some instruction somewhere holding it back, we're gonna need new pumps.
I guess I don't know why they're not taking part of the responsibility on their end, for cleaning that out. That really bothers me.
J K mechanical, or whatever it is, they're saying it's, this guy's fault, USA's saying it was their fault, and nobody's made it. So here's Juan since again, but I mean, it's not that big a deal, you're picking a pump pole, you stick it down there, if there's sand in there, you're gonna see it. I don't know how deep it is, I can't imagine it's like twenty feet deep, it's probably fifteen or sixteen feet deep, I don't know how big that that was.
I have no idea.
But when I asked, uh, Marjorie about it, he said they pumped every one of them out. But that could have been before what happened, happened.
Right.
I don't know. And nobody's taking, uh, blame for it, that's what's happening, one blaming the other, and the other blaming the other.
And then we'll have to foot the bill.
Somebody has to find out, and if it is, if we do find out this part, oh, you won't be paying it, somebody else will be paying the bill.
Well, I agree with that.
This is like, you just could go into like legal stuff, I mean, I, I, I just, this is what I envision, is like this big legal battle of.
Yeah.
Money, and if we, us not having enough, and then us using an old system, that's, as it breaks down, I, I.
Well, and it's not being maintained to the point that it should be, so that's gonna be a big problem, you know.
USA is the main contractor on our side, okay? Why aren't you there finding out if there's sand in there or not? It's, that's what I told him, I said, why are we not streaming the thing down there? They can figure that out, they got stuff to do that.
Well, I guess we could, well, I guess we could do that. Well, I almost died when he.
Well, and he didn't have anything to say.
That's not wrong, some kids are not funny. That's not wrong, something just not funny. Yeah?
Yeah, I watched him break it down.
So I do have one question and maybe Brian can answer this. On their bill or whatever it is, their estimate budget here. There's twenty-five thousand dollars less liquidated damages, is that what they're calling their fine, do you think? I don't know what that means.
So liquidated damages would be something that's assessed by the city against them for, for basically not finishing the project on time.
Okay, so they have twenty-five thousand dollars on there. Because the, it was two thousand well, I don't know, so maybe that's not off of there, I don't know, I can't tell, I guess, if it's subtracted off or not. And how would they just have twenty-five thousand dollars, I should ask.
We're not paying this right now, right?
No.
Yeah, so they're asking for twenty-five thousand dollars to be paid to them?
Well, it just says less liquidated damages and then there's a balance of total due, estimated total due, he said on the project yet, to USA.
Do they have a number built in for the liquidated damage that there's in driving?
Twenty-five, well, I don't know if it's subtracted or not, I can't really tell.
It is unsubtracted because that was this one here.
Yeah, but then it's only a hundred and seventy-seven, so I don't know where that comes from.
I think they just jacked up this whole bill to cover themselves.
Probably.
That's what I think happened here, because we, he never told us we had this much coming, it was pretty much done. And as far as digging that pipe in, that, that was dug in, that manhole that they just put in, because the engineer was wrong on it.
And who did that?
They were gonna hook up the pipe before.
Is that additional, uh?
That's what I was trying to look at on there, I couldn't find it, but when they put, they didn't have that Y put in there right, so they just, they didn't do it.
No, they're not.
And they just put it to the side and now they finally finished it. That's decided that you're hogging the chain. I don't think that manhole was even in the, um, the original bit. They added that to correct what was wrong with the engineering on that.
So this, where is the original? We need to find the original estimate. Okay. So we can see what
That's probably been added in here too, like, and all this plumbing and stuff, that's why I asked him about this. Cause now, I mean, right now, it's like s- s- four or six inch pipes down and they're running into that ten inch. So if they're gonna go to bigger pumps, I just assume they were gonna have to change all that piping. That's what you're gonna get into a lot of money, you have to change all that piping.
All right, well, I think we better find out what this twenty-five is, see what the, get that estimated, the original estimate. Okay, so we can maybe just email it out or something.
So they did deduct twenty-five thousand in liquidated damages, but the question is, who came up with the number of twenty-five thousand?
I don't know where that came from.
Pretty interesting.
Because really, I don't know how they got so confused on the date either, when they're saying, oh, later this year.
I know, I would have. That was totally, they weren't, he meant, he meant later last year.
He said this year.
I know, but this was supposed to be completed in twenty-three of October.
But we said June first.
Twenty-second, twenty-two. A little different where I thought he was pointing to this fall.
This year, right.
And, and that was my understanding is that they were, the project was supposed to be completed last fall.
Correct.
And my understanding was that the liquidated damage amount was like five hundred a day.
Yes, it is. So if we go by June first, because that was the date that we said we needed it done and they said, oh, and they didn't think Nash Rock would be ready, so then they backpedaled and didn't do it. Now it's August first and it's not even close. And why is this generator so late in the game here?
So, so they're claiming fifty days of liquidated damages.
That they had to have natural gas for.
Yep.
This is a natural gas generator.
So then, a follow-up question, so have they ever put in a change order to change the, the end date, the completion date of the contract? That's what they should have done.
No.
And there's a provision, because there's, my recollection is that they use fairly standard I A I documents or A I A documents. So there's a provision in the, in the standard forms that says there is no change to the contract effective until it's put, put into a change order approved. And so our original completion date is still the completion dates.
October first or twenty?
No matter what anybody has set outside of that.
Oh, okay.
It's, it still is, and they're not following the process that's right they put in place to be followed.
Yep.
And it's a common mistake that contractors
And that would be the benchmark, should have came to a meeting and said, we need to extend this date to.
Correct, this is the problem and we need to amend the contract to reset the date.
Yep.
Well, they had come up at the sewer meeting about finding them and this was way early in the game, like before October. And Nash Rock wouldn't find them because it was their fault that was holding it up, the electronic parts didn't come. So they kept letting them go, okay, well, we're not gonna find them, but they don't, they can't finish the job because they don't have the parts. So that carried on for a while.
But at any, I mean, they never came here to present a change order.
But our plan, as of October, could have been, they could have finished our side. I don't know what they're waiting for, they didn't order that manhole till, what, a month or two ago, that's why it took a month to get it.
Yeah, I don't get this, if this is what's needed, I'm confused as to why it wasn't ordered and waiting.
Does that mean that the damage speed goes back to October twenty?
October one?
Yeah, so that's a lot more.
There's probably worth the same.
Well, we won't, we won't owe a hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
Yeah, well, and the, and the, the bottom line becomes this, is the project operational yet?
No.
No.
Then that number's not even known yet.
I know.
Cause that, that, that number doesn't stop ticking.
Right.
Until it's done.
Yep, and it's not
But they should come and put one in.
Where, so they've never come with a change order on the date, which they should, the contractor should come to the engineer, the engineer should come here and say they've requested a extension on the duty that they was due. And they've never done that, so.
And the longer they don't extend it, sure.
Yep, that's good for us.
Interesting that they filled in a number.
I know, that's, I was gonna ask them and then I'm like, no, I'll just wait.
I'm not curious, I'm not curious if it was them, I think it was Alan.
Alan.
Alan's about to make it sound, it wasn't, uh, I don't remember.
Yeah, it's probably, yeah, it's Alan.
This is just an example for us that you can't understand.
It is.
And he must have just thrown that.
Estimate, that's all he kept saying.
Well, and that's, you get that for every job and you get that every time you it's, it's up to date on everything, what's been paid, what hasn't been paid.
Yes.
And every time you have a pay estimate, the pay estimate is listed with what you're paying, plus this should be up to date, including the next pay estimate. So, cause see, he added the thirty-five thousand dollars now on there for that pump.
Yeah.
So that's taken off the total, so that was in addition to the project.
And I give a motion to
I'll make a motion to pause the special meeting at four fifty-six, four, four fifty-four.
For further discussion, call the favor.
Alright.
I mean, quote, special mean quote.
Do you have the ability to